Good evening and welcome to the Wilmington School Committee meeting of January 25th, 2017. Our first order of business this evening is an executive session from which we will return. By roll call, could I have a motion to enter executive session? Mrs. Bonnich, second, Mr. Talbot, by roll call vote, Mr. Bjork?
Yes.
Me, yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kane, thank you very much. Okay, we will return. If you could all join me in saying the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, the next item on our agenda is the approval of items by consensus. And I'm going to group these to be as efficient as possible, but the first one, the approval of the minutes from January 11th, 2017, regular session. We did receive an updated copy, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that we were approving the updated version. And I think we were all present for that meeting except for Mr. Bjork. Could I make a, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th, 2017, please? Mr. Mullis, second, Mrs. Kane, all those in favor? That would be unanimous. Okay. The second item, the approval of the Wilmington Educational Foundation grant for the STEM Fair. Thank you to Mrs. Benton, would you like to make any comments on the web grant?
I'd just like to acknowledge the work of the Wilmington Education Foundation and always coming through to support innovative and exciting grants for the schools that benefit all of our students. And this is to continue helping to support the STEM Fair that Lisa Ippolito has been leading the charge on the past few years. So, we thank them.
Okay, great. Can I have a motion to approve the Wilmington Education Foundation grant for the STEM Fair? I see a whole bunch of hands. Alright, Mr. Talbot, I'll get you as the first, and I'll get Mrs. Kane as the second. All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Excellent, thank you. Next item is the approval of the out-of-state field trip to Ordeon Park in Ryan, New Hampshire on June 2nd.
This is a field trip that has been a tradition at the Shawshin School. Unfortunately, Diane Flaherty couldn't be here this evening, but it truly ties into the third grade curriculum, the Mass State standards, and is a wonderful trip. The first time I saw it, I was like, why do I have to approve this? And I forgot, it's right over the line in New Hampshire and not in Massachusetts. But I recommend favorable motion on this, action on this.
Great. Could I have a-
I had a chance to go on it last year, it was a fantastic trip. The kids learn a ton and they have a great, great time.
And if I remember correctly, the tradition, the informal tradition is that fathers go as the chaperones.
Yeah.
If I remember that. Mrs. Burns?
Just a quick question, and this might be my rusty memory. Has, is the cost of the trip paid per student? Okay.
Yes.
And it's always been that way?
Yes, but there are funds for students who cannot afford it.
Very good, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions on the field trip? No? Okay, seeing no more discussion, I'll have a motion to approve the field trip, please. Mrs. Bonnich first, Mrs. Burns second, all those in favor? That would be unanimous. Okay, we have some warrants, G407, R210, R211, L19, L20, L21, FS17, FS18. Could I have a motion to approve those warrants, please? Mr. Bjork, second, Mrs. Burns, all those in favor? Great, thank you. We have another warrant for payroll for weekend in January 18th, 2017. I think we can all vote on this, so there are Mrs. Kane, Mrs. Bonnich first, Mr. Talbot second, all those in favor? Okay, that would be all with one abstention. And the last two all grouped together, warrants CB05 and sped 10. I'll have a motion to approve those warrants, please. Mrs. Bonnich, Mrs. Kane, second, all those in favor? That would be Mr. Mullis, Mrs. Broussard, Mrs. Bonnich, Mrs. Kane, Mr. Talbot. Thank you very much. Okay, that gets us through our items by consensus. Alright, our next item is the Wilmington Public Schools Annual Report, under the Superintendent's report, please.
So, I'm happy to provide you with the annual report. That will be part of the town's annual report for 2016. Quite a bit of work goes into this, and each department head and principal writes about what has gone on in the school the past year, and it's full of outstanding information, accolades for athletic awards and staff awards, and I commend all of the writers of the annual report and hope that you will take some time to read it.
Any questions on the annual report? Any comments? Mrs. Kane?
I would just like to say thank you to the school department side who does this, because as you said, Mrs. Benton, it is a fabulous report. It summarizes everything that's been happening in the schools for the last year, and so it's, and the way it's presented, anybody can read it, anyone who wants to know what's going on should get a hold of this and read it. It's excellent. So, thank you for everyone who does all the hard work on it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments on the annual report? Okay, seeing none. Old business is our next item. I don't believe that we have any old business to take care of, so moving on to new business, the first item being the fiscal year 2018. I can't believe I'm saying that. Superintendent's recommended budget, and I believe we have a presentation.
So, last time we discussed the FY18 budget, it was a proposed budget, and at that point we were looking at a 3.5 percent increase. Over the previous year, the Director of Administration and Finance and I met with the town manager to talk about the capital budget and the operating budget, and we agreed on an increase of 3.25. So, this budget presentation reflects that. And I just wanted to, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, we're going to do it quickly, but for the public's sake, I always believe that a school department's budget is really not about numbers, but about students. And it's based on the mission that the school district has for the school. And in order to provide a challenging, relevant, personalized educational experience, both academic and social and emotional success for our students, we really need to put dollars into helping teachers to attain those goals, including well-trained and highly qualified staff. So, you will see this budget includes professional development funds that in recent years had been moved to other areas. I'm bringing them back so that our teachers have the funds to support the new development of new curriculum. And you will also see that in this budget, that there were some concerns about programs that were cut last year, or items that were cut in the budget, and I will be bringing those back, and I will mention them as we move along. So, the core values for the district include respect, inclusiveness, responsibility, and integrity. And we want this community to be a place where all students have full opportunities to learn and grow with a rigorous curriculum, gauging personalized instruction, delivering a safe, supportive, inclusive environment. The guiding principles, the system is committed to system-wide goals based on the strategic plan, quality teacher-student relationships. We acknowledge fiscal constraints on our budget planning. This is not a wish list, this is what we think we need in order to continue to make growth in the school district. We take pride in our well-maintained facilities, and we're committed to hiring and retaining our best employees. The three components of this budget include chapter 70, state aid, which was announced today by the governor. It's not as much as he makes it out to believe, I just have to say that because it's only about an increase of $20 per student, which is not on the most generous side. We've seen more before that. Local contributions, which is the town side, and then other funding sources is any grants that we receive, which unfortunately, on the federal government's side today, we're excited to get indications about a lot of funding being cut from the education program, so. So, Wilmington has always had its priorities, class size, special programs, direct service to students, and the continual funding of full day. If you recall, last year the full day grants were taken away, but you rightly continued the full day kindergarten program, staff was full-time, and assistants in each classroom. So, in any budget, there are contractual obligations that have to be met. This year we will be doing negotiation with the teachers and cafeteria workers. We are using more technology in the classrooms, your commitment to the one-to-one computer will be expanding, and we need funds for professional development. We are seeing more complex special ed, IEPs coming along, and with the bright, beautiful new building comes increased utility costs. So, what will this budget be able to do? We'll maintain our current class sizes, which are very advantageous. We will reinstate a part-time library media special at the Boutwell and Wildwood Schools, and a full-time media specialist at the middle school. We use a system I call addition by subtraction, so we eliminate another position in order to create the middle school library position. We're taking an OIT position and converting it into a library media specialist. We are reinstating professional development funds to support our staff so that they can provide our students with appropriate curriculum. We need to ensure that all legal mandates are funded, special ed, homeless, transportation, and ELL. We're establishing a tech academy for students in the summer. Excuse me. That will be self-supporting. This cold won't go away. That will be self-supporting for incoming eighth and ninth graders. We will be establishing Wilmington as an SEI training site for surrounding communities. One of the new regulations for recertification is all teachers have to take 10 hours of SEL instruction. The Department of Ed for the past couple of years has provided it free, but that runs out. So, now, what we're going to do is turn it into an opportunity, because our ELL coordinator is certified. We will provide spaces for our staff, but sell spaces to surrounding communities, so that'll be self-supporting as well. We need to fund all our contractual requirements. I think the first day I got back here, I received a letter about concerns about the middle school requests for supplies that parents have to bring at the beginning of the year, and so in order to reduce that burden on parents, we have increased the supplies at the middle school. And we will, in the spring, collect the information from the teachers on what it is they want students to bring, and we will purchase as much of it as we can. What's not on this list, but something else that had come up since I arrived here, was there was a concern by the performing arts parents that we were not funding performing arts at the same level as athletics. Well, I met with the group. Jackie Rafi did a lot of research for me in collecting all the facts and the numbers, and frankly, if we eliminated the amount we pay for rental of hockey, of the hockey rink, performing arts student, per pupil cost is greater for performing arts than it is. We spend more money on performing arts than we do on athletics. But, they did have a convincing argument about the cost of buying the copyrights for plays. So, we've increased the, put a line item in the budget for, to cover the copyright for the plays, and they were very happy with that. So, I tried to listen in the few short weeks I had before putting together this budget to the needs you had, community members had, teachers had, administrators have, and I hope that, well, I do. I believe that this is a budget that really will provide for Wilmington to move forward. So, just for a refresher, there's 3,463 students, 471 staff members, approximately, and 93% of our high school students go on to higher education. We have 30 students whose first language is not English, and 70 out-of-district placements. The interesting piece on the 30 students whose first language is not English, I mean, that number sort of has stayed constant, but the languages have changed over the years of kids coming in and out of the district. So, recommended changes for the budget, personnel changes. If you recall, that there were some additions and reductions at the beginning of the year. So, if you look at the bottom, what we're recommending is the librarian at the middle school, the part-time at Wildwood and Boutwell. By taking the Shawshin librarian, Point Two, and moving her to the Boutwell, the Point Two at Wildwood is an increase. The OIT technician becomes, position becomes librarian's position. And then, we're going to reduce, based on class size, we can reduce a teacher to ed assistance, and we'll make some central office reductions. So, that we will be looking to budget for 471.90 staff. The budget includes step-in salary changes, new positions. We make sure that we, as best we can, figure out for teachers, you know, who's changing lanes each year and how that's going to cost, but also longevity. We lost the kindergarten grant, so that's now in the operating budget. So, the salary change is 3.18 percent. Non-salary changes is 3.52 percent. Again, increasing the curriculum supplies so that we have a reading program, new reading program at the elementary level that really, you're spending lots and lots of money on training, which is needed, but you can't do the program if you don't have classroom libraries, so we're hoping to switch our funds that's coming here to supplies for the classrooms.
Could I ask you a question? Sorry. I know it didn't make it here, but just a quick question on upcoming possible retirements? Are we expecting significant retirements or minimum?
In fact, we only have two retire, two-
Oh, that's good news, okay. Thank you, thank you.
In fact, we had none, and I asked the president of the Teachers Association to do a reminder letter about the December 1st, to see.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, so there's only two this year. We have to, you know, make sure that we provide funds for transportation for homeless, increase in PD, again, the opposite, school supplies, that's for the middle school, and maintenance repairs. We are taking textbooks out because foreign language, rural language wants to create their own curriculum online, so we're going to use the funds to provide for summer work for the teachers. So, that being said, we're looking at a total increase of 3.25 percent. Capital requests, we're looking to continue the telephone system project, replacement of elementary switches, continue to add laptop cots for MCAS 2.0. Mail server needs to be upgraded. Our once state-of-the-art TECAD engineering lab at the middle school needs to be replaced. And pre-Ked three lab PCs, battery replacements, and a sped van. So, as I used to say every year when I presented the budget, and I will be happy to say it again this year, our budget work is based on the belief that the most important interactions that take place between the teacher and the student, and we've labored to build a budget that supports the mission of the Wilmington Public Schools, and continues to believe that that's the most important place to spend our funding. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to questions. Mrs. Kane, I saw your hand first.
I just wanted to say one thing, that when I first came back on the school committee in 2004, the last few years we've been doing MCAS, and that's been the really important thing, but for us at that time was to increase the number of students who went to college, and it was down in the 70s. And to believe that all these years, we have worked so hard, and to, that's a very nice rate of kids going to college from the school system. So, I congratulate the school system on doing that.
You're absolutely right, it was 71 percent when I came here.
Yeah, oh, I was right, oh, good. I thought it was in the 70s, that's good. The other thing I just wanted to check on was for the testing, that, because we haven't talked a lot about the testing this year, the MCAS that they're doing, and I'm assuming we're not going to, everyone does not have to have the computer to do it at this point, what's happening there?
So, the district made a decision to test online grades four through eight. So, we are putting together a plan to do it. I would not have made that recommendation.
Who made that, who can make that decision?
Previous administration.
Okay.
And I could not get it changed.
Oh, dear.
And I'll tell you why I'm concerned, is we're moving lab cots just across town in order to do this, and that's always not the best thing to be doing. But we've got it all planned out, we have a schedule.
Which grades would that be?
Four through eight.
Okay, because I had a discussion with a little fourth, a little fifth grader who started crying and said, "We do not, I do not know how to do the computer, we don't do the computer. How, why do I have to take the test on that computer?"
So, there will be practice-
So, I thought that, I wanted to make sure we're having practices for them, because it's not the test they're so worried about, it's the way that they have to take it.
Right.
Good, I'm glad we're on to that.
So, is, so, for clarification, third and 10th grade, are they doing paper?
No. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, third and 10th grade are doing paper, yes. And fifth grade is doing paper for science. That's statewide.
And the other, the other piece too, is because it's coming in, the MCAS, the 2.0, it's, the scores are going to be reported, but they're not, you know, they're given a leeway. So, for the students that do have some difficulty with the transferring, you know, from paper to, you know, the one-to-one technology, so there's going to be a hiatus there on, on the-
That was the incentive why we went to mostly computers, so that-
Correct.
Because in the transition, we would be held harmless with our ranking, our levels.
And, three years ago, well, when I was here, we bought thin clients, and DESC said they would be able to be used for MCAS, but they're not able to be used for MCAS 2.0, so that's unfortunate, because we have those in all the intermediate labs. So, we do, I have to congratulate, and we have Nathan Atwater sitting in the back there, congratulate the tech department for coming up with a plan that will keep us going, but it's going to be a long, long spring of testing.
Hopefully. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the budget? Mr. Bjork?
I'll just make a comment that the work that you and Paula have done, and I'm sure Sean too, just in the several weeks since you've been back, is certainly impressive, and I'm very appreciative of everything you've done.
Thank you.
And I'm thrilled that the librarians are coming back, and a number of things that I've seen of this.
Thank you.
I'm just going to make one point to, for all of us to save the date of Thursday, March 2nd. That's when the Wilmington Public Schools will be going before the finance committee. That's at 7:00 at the town hall. As our tradition has been, we always try to go to support the work that's being done, and that is otherwise an open public meeting. Okay, our next item of business, superintendent search planning. So, I had asked to add this to our agenda, because it's time, sadly, for us to start working on our search. I'd like to make note that there are approximately 50 openings for superintendents across the state. That's a lot, so this is going to be a big challenge. I'm going to suggest that we set a separate meeting to start fleshing out our recruitment and selection plan, and I'm kind of thinking this could be an open public meeting, but more of a workshop style as we've done in the past, with the superintendent search being the only topic for discussion, the only thing on the agenda. That way, we can really focus and make a lot of decisions about how we want to proceed. We could do that tonight, but I don't want to be here until midnight any more than anybody else does. So, a couple of, a couple of possible dates I'm going to throw out to everybody, and we'll check our calendars while we're here, so we can walk away tonight with an agreed-upon time to meet for that workshop style, and for us to get it posted. But I also want to make note to everyone, we've, we've been doing a lot of work lately in the last few months. I know we're going into budget season, we've got a negotiation coming up, but this has got to be all hands on deck. So, all of us need to fully participate in that process. So, here are a couple of dates, I just looked at the calendar, I was trying to be mindful of what else was happening in the town at the same time. Wednesday, the 1st, so a week from tonight, at 7:00 would be one possibility. Thursday, the 2nd, at 7:00 is one possibility. And then, the other one that works best for me is Monday, the 6th, at 7:00. By, let's do this, by a show of hands, who wants Wednesday, the 1st of February? I've got one there. Okay. Thursday, the 2nd-
You know, that's Groundhog Day, so a lot of people might be busy.
All right.
At least we know where you'll be.
Yeah, there you go.
Looking for my shadow.
Right, over and over and over again, right? All right, so Thursday, the 2nd is-
Thursday, the 2nd, I can do.
You can do-
Don't count me, because I-
Because you, right, right, right. And Monday, the 6th. How does Monday, the 6th?
I can do it.
We feel, oh, looks like Monday, the 6th.
I've got a family, my mother's going in for surgery that day, so.
Okay, okay. Well, there's going to be multiple meetings, this is just the kickoff. Okay, so let's go with Monday, the 6th, at 7:00. I will work with our central office team to reserve a room, get it posted. This will be the only item on the agenda, but there's lots of little decisions that we'll need to make, and I foresee superintendent search being on every agenda for the full school committee for now until the time that we've made the decision. So, any, any other questions or concerns regarding that?
What time is it again?
I was going to say 7:00.
Seven, okay.
Does that, 7:00 start time?
In case, if things, if I can swing it?
Yeah. And we'll come up with a good location that's, I like this building personally, but, okay. All right, so I will, I will get that posted, I will get an agenda out to everyone and send it along. So, without further ado, moving on to the next item, public comments.
Hi, David Ragsdale, 18 Marion Street. I wanted to share a little bit of Mrs. Kane's concern about the technology readiness for students who'll be taking MCAS this spring, that there, there's a combination of both familiarity with the computer, but also just basic typing skills. There's going to be a lot of writing on the MCAS this year. And, you know, we have my daughter doing 10 minutes of typing practice a night on the computer, just so that she's actually comfortable enough, can find the, can find the keys on the keyboard in order to, you know, write an essay of some kind of decent length, and I think that that's going to be an issue. It's definitely the right year to be trying to, you know, jump into the computer-based testing. I think that it's a good thing that, that we're doing as much of it as we can, and not just doing the grade four and eight. But that's something that I think is going to be a concern going forward from here. In order to express what you know, you have to be able to get the thoughts just comfortably from your head onto the screen, the same way that they do from, from their head onto the paper when they're writing. One other thing I want to mention about, about this, or the Hold Harmless Year, is that the Board of Education is probably going to be asked to reset the entire accountability system this year, because we have to, the state has to submit its ESAP plan in April, and, which will go into effect for the, for the following year. And the plan right now is to completely reset the accountability system, and then in 2018, start to look at the second year of results and build from there. So, essentially, there will be no accountability levels at all this year, not just next year in the Hold Harmless Year.
Great. Thank you for sharing, Mr. Ragsdale. Okay. Other reports. Do we have any subcommittee, Mrs. Kane? Mrs. Burns?
I just wanted to bring up for consideration for the future, and I spoke to superintendent on my way in, that as you, she touched upon, there's been a lot of legislation at the federal level, some of which touches upon immigration. There's going to be certain, I guess, things coming down the pipeline with regards to federal legislation that may impact our students in our schools. And I just want you to think about, I'd like to go to, at some point, our state legislation, legislators, legislators, to maybe have a discussion. It's kind of early, too early now to find out how it's going to fall out, but if you could just keep that in mind, there'll be more things coming down as well. And I just, I will be consulting with MASC as well to gather information for a future discussion.
Okay. Great. Mrs. Kane?
This is from the CPAC.
Okay, great.
There's going to be a parent workshop navigating the cyber world. This sounds perfect for someone like myself. Geared for parents, this workshop reviews the challenges and dangerous situations that may arise through use of the internet, social media, and smartphones. It is important for parents to be aware of the popular apps, social media sites, and programs used by youth online. This workshop explains the issues and possible consequences from cyberbullying, sexting, and revealing identifying information to strangers. So next week, on Tuesday, January 31st, at 6:30 PM at the Wilmington Middle School Auditorium, intended audience is parents of any students that use electronic devices to access the internet. So that sounds like a really important workshop, so I hope people will be able to get out and go to that.
And I think the middle school kids on Tuesday, I think it was the 7th and the 8th grade, they got the age-appropriate version of that presentation. So now it's the parents' turn to get their, their age-appropriate version.
Great, thank you.
That's great. Okay, any other subcommittee reports? No, seeing none. Correspondence is the next item. And I did have, we did receive one item. Mrs. Bonish, if you could read that as our corresponding secretary, please.
Okay, this is from Jeffrey Hull, sent on January 23rd at 10:31 PM. Joanne, at tonight's selectmen's meeting, the board voted to sponsor Jack Cushing's request to name the new high school gymnasium after his father. Attached is the letter making that request, which I believe Beverly sent over last Friday. The board requested that I forward this letter to the school committee in the hope that they might also vote to endorse or co-sponsor this article, which will be placed on the annual town meeting warrant for consideration at the April 29th, 2017 annual town meeting. I ask that this request be considered at the school committee upcoming meeting. Thank you. Jeffrey Hull.
Thank you. Mrs. Benton, do you have any history you can share with us on that?
Yeah, this came up quickly on, on my radar, and first thing I did was went back and looked at the high school building committee minutes. We, those of us who served on that, had decided that we would not automatically transfer our names from the old building to the new building. That being said, I have no problem with this. However, I think it behooves us all, and I talked to Jeff today, and we'll put it in writing, I think there needs to be a process going forward of how the town wants to handle this, because my guess is that there'll be other requests that will come along. So I'd, I'd ask that you not vote on this this evening, but let me do some homework and get back to you.
Okay, great.
And this has nothing to do with the person. I, I have no problem with, with the gymnasium being named Lawrence Cushing. It has to do with the process.
Process and procedure. Okay. Could I ask for a motion to table this discussion until we get more information? Mrs. Kane?
I know that we table this discussion. Waiting on more information.
Is there a second? I saw you out of the corner of my eye. Mrs. Burns, thank you. All those in favor of tabling this discussion until we get more information, please signify. Thank you.
I have one announcement.
Okay, and that would be unanimous. Kim, thank you. Mrs. Benton has an announcement.
So I just wanted to announce that tomorrow, something very special is going to be happening at the middle school. The Ericksons, who are the parents of a sixth grader at the middle school, won a, an auction item that is allowing a member of the Boston Celtics to come to the Wilmington Middle School tomorrow.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
So we're all very excited about that.
Yeah.
And we won't know who the Celtic is until tomorrow, and we're hoping that they win tonight so that it's a celebration. But we thank the Erickson family because the kids are all excited, and I think it's going to be a fun day, so...
Absolutely. And I think the, the kids have been asked to wear their, their Celtics garb in celebration, so lots of green in the middle school tomorrow. Excellent, thank you. Any other correspondence received? Not that I'm aware of? Okay. So future dates and agenda items, so I'm just going to reiterate that we chose Monday, February 6th, at 7:00 for our kickoff meeting, our workshop on our recruitment and selection plan for a superintendent. On February 8th would be our next regular meeting.
And we will have a budget hearing.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, on January 30th, which is Monday, we will be attending the town manager's budget presentation again, as per our tradition, if as many of us can be there. That would be very helpful. So we've got our, our next regular school committee meeting on February 8th. On March 2nd, as I already referred to, is the Wilmington Public Schools going before the Wilmington Finance Committee for the budget meeting. And then on March 8th, we have our first regular school committee meeting of March. It's a lot, so put it in your calendars. We'll try to have a, a good presence at all of those. Any other meetings that I might have missed? No. Okay, great. And with that, we've got the last agenda item, which is adjournment. So can I take a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Kane, so move, second. Mrs. Burns, thank you. All those in favor, unanimous. Thank you very much, folks.